I'm gonna call the public session meeting to order at about 1:15 and I'm gonna ask everyone to rise and recite the.
Seven fifteen.
Oh, sorry. Seven fifteen and I'm gonna ask that we rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Nate, do you wanna lead us in the pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have agenda review. Is there...I have no additions to the agenda. Dr. Kenley, do you have any? Any additions from board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We'll do the New Durham School student presentation. Do you mind recognizing?
Yeah, I don't think they're up here yet. They're in the music room. Carolyn Ramsey just went to get them. But welcome to New Durham School. I want to thank you for coming. I also want to point out that our school nurse put out a pretty good snack spread over there, so please help yourself, anyone. Those of you who have been around a while might remember Marie Frank at Crescent Lake, who would always go way above and beyond, and so Darlene wanted to try to make a point that she was gonna go above and beyond. We are deep into the holidays here at New Durham School. We have our holiday shop that you may have seen when you were in the library, where the kids will go and shop for their family members and take those home right before Christmas. We have a combined concert with Tuckton Borough School on Wednesday evening. We've been playing in the snow, sledding down the hill. We're hosting a pancake breakfast with Santa on the thirteenth. Is that Saturday, Nate? Yeah, Saturday. And that is to benefit the sixth graders who are fundraising for Ecology School. And here they come. Tonight, we're just gonna have a couple of little numbers from our chorus. This is not the entire chorus. Yeah, any place that you like. But it's pretty close. We have thirty-two students in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade in the chorus, and then just gonna sing a couple of numbers that they are going to also do at our concert on Wednesday.
Like you wanna ski.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the families who got their children here this evening. Like any other sports or other team, we would not sound or do well with only a portion of them here, so surely we have a majority here, and thank you for your time this evening. Our first piece is called "Sweet Silent Night." It is our ballad of our concert. It is a beautiful piece that has a gentle, delicate vocal part and an ethereal piano part. I loved that word when I read the description. You're gonna hear us working really hard to start learning two-part harmony, which is an elementary chorus staple. By the time I send these dudes to the middle school and onto the high school as well, we want them to have experience with part singing and learning to sing in harmony and learning what harmony's all about. So we've been experimenting and we've had some great moments so far, so we hope you enjoy. Okay, where's my phone? Where's my mic? Who's my mic? Okay, so if you're on this side, you can just get some mic right. All right, and if you're sitting on this side, then I have you guys come over a little bit closer, so we'll hear everything you can hear. Okay, right in front. Here. Give me the mic. No, that's that part. Now, I'm just gonna want you to turn it down a little bit.
(singing) All is good, all is bright, all this sweet silent night. Stars above shining bright, all this sweet silent night. And the snow comes and the stones fallin' to the ground, and without a sound the world turns white. Silent night, holy night. All is white, winter's snow, heavenly stars pass and go. Morning dew, we wake bright, all this sweet silent night, all this sweet silent night. And the snow comes and the stones fallin' to the ground, and without a sound the world turns white. All things good, dreams take flight, all this sweet silent night, all this sweet silent night.
The other piece we have for you this evening will be our closer on Wednesday. It is an arrangement of Bruce Springsteen's version of "Santa Claus Is Coming to Town." Come on.
(singing) You better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town. He's making a list and checking it twice, he's gonna find out who's naughty and nice. Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake, he knows if you've been bad or good, so you better be good for goodness sake, you better be good for goodness sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town. Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping, he knows when you're awake, he knows if you've been bad or good, so you better be good for goodness sake, you better be good for goodness sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry, you better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town, Santa Claus is coming to town. Santa Claus is coming to town, 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 Santa Claus is coming to town.
Thank you again. It's a pleasure to perform for you tonight, and you'll get to see the whole show on Thursday night, fingers crossed. Thursday, if not. Thank you very much, everybody. How do you wanna do this now?
We will have to go back to the music room, and then you can grab them there, okay?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great job. So good. Nice. Welcome.
He knows who that is. Oh, you guys are actually getting like... Oh, you guys are amazing, okay. I would believe he is the man. All right. Well, thank you for that wonderful Christmas holiday course.
Thank you for that.
So with that, I think we're gonna move on to the acceptance of minutes. So we'll start with the November third school board meeting minutes. I saw no need for corrections, so I don't know if anyone else did, but someone wants to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jim.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Beth. Is there any further discussion or suggested revisions? Seeing none, Kath, could you call the roll once you're ready, please?
Tom?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
The National Arts Society just started up their Kingswood Kids Program where each Saturday, kids from the elementary schools will be able to come and participate in games and crafts at the high school. It will continue all the way until the end of March. During Thanksgiving break, the annual Craft Fairs Hour at the high school where students from FBA, NHS, and the Ireland Food Trip helped out to fundraise for their clubs. The venues were completely sold out as always, and there was a great show from the community. Kingswood Theater recently held their showcase of Cinderella from November 21st to the 23rd, and attendance there was great as well. Registrations are now open for their Winter Festival Play, The Last Firefly, which will be on March 13th. Finally, the Future Farmers Association is holding their Reef Fundraiser, and Nights Against Hunger is holding a formula and diaper drive to help mothers and infants in our community. That's all I have for this month, and thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate your report. So, any comments or questions for Bryce?
How do you get a wish upon a star?
Question was, how do you get a wish upon a star?
Yeah, so there's tags in the high school right with the lecture, right to the left of the lecture hall. I think, I looked today and there was probably like 20 left, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go on to our preliminary budget hearing. So, I'm gonna, what time is it? Seven thirty-seven, seven thirty-six? Seven thirty-six, I'm gonna open up the budget hearing. So just as a, for process, I'm going to, I assume, go to that podium and then provide a presentation on the budget. I'll sit back down and then we'll conduct a public hearing. People can provide public input on the budget. And if you have any questions, you can, we'll try to the best of our ability to answer them, but, you know, we've kind of updated the process since the last couple of years to try to encourage some dialogue. So, I'm gonna get up and go over here.
We thought visibility would be better on the big screens, but if you need to move, we can.
And the board members had it in their conference.
We have it in here.
Yeah, so I started. Okay. All right, so we're just gonna get this set up. But, just so, folks, and I'll go over this when the...
Yeah, I would've had mine, but Catherine and...
From here, and, well, sorry, my presentation starts with myself. Kirsten Berg, Kayla Hewitt, and Dr. Jim Manning are members of the Finance Committee, so we sit down over a three-day period with administrators, and on the last day, just, you know, as a Finance Committee superintendent, and some of our, you know, upper brass administrators, Kathy O'Glinner, our business admin. And we fine-tune things and continue working through it. If I notice additional, that's where I might need to make adjustments. And so, Dr. Jim this year was Chair of our Finance Committee, so he did it very capably well. I'm giving the presentation tonight, though, as the Board Chair. See, are we having technical difficulty?
Thank you, sir. Do you have the...
Yes.
Does anybody have a copy of that?
It's right there.
Oh, my goodness!
We bring them, yes. So, yes, you'll see what the, and you'll see all the different lines, and that will be, we send out, I believe the proposed budget is also what we sent, what we finally, so tonight's a preliminary hearing, so this may change. We have our final hearing in January at Kingswood. We send that out also in a mailing each year to all the registered residents of the, you know, who can vote in the district, and they get it. One side is, you know, who the candidates are, so who is registered for the different offices, warrant articles, and then, on the flip side, you'll actually see whatever that final is. This is obviously preliminary work the Finance Committee has brought, so that's still, I guess, for, it's a working document.
When is the final?
It will be done at our January board meeting. Yeah, and it will be posted with a warrant for our, we do our, and I'll, once we get everything set up, you'll see we actually have a timeline of everything, and I'll go over the timeline again at the end, but utter deliberative, which is the first Saturday in February.
Thirty-first.
Oh, it's January 31st. That's about the earliest it can be. So, January 31st, we have our, and we'll have the dates for that at the end, we have our deliberative session, so where the legislative bodies can go provide input, make changes to warrant our tools, et cetera. You know, so, all right. How do I move?
I'm working on...
Okay, we're working on that. So you'll see, so this is our preliminary budget hearing for fiscal year 2027. Today's December 8th. I think everyone who's wanted to receive a copy of this year's, you know, what the budget, the draft budget is that's been presented by the Finance Committee. And myself, again Kirsten Berg, Kayla Hewitt, and Dr. Jim Manning are members of the Finance Committee. I'm Chair of the Board. Dr. Jim, though, he was Chair of our Finance Committee this year. So, once we get the little clicker...
Special move.
It's a... There we go. Oh, we got it. It's okay. Got it going? Perfect. All right, thank you so much, Dr. Berg. So, again, I introduced myself, so we're gonna go over the budget process real quick. You'll see, you know, we've already done a whole bunch of the budget process. The Budget Preparation Process is a comprehensive effort that begins in October involving collaboration across all levels of the district. Staff members in each school share their, might I point with this too? Ooh, no, I can't.
No, you can, you can.
I can? I was, I kind of, is it the B? I just broke it, I'm sorry.
Hey, we need kids to train it for you.
I know, look at that. I just, I got way too confident and cocky. Man, fuck.
I thought it had a laser at the end.
That's what I got too. I wanted, I like using the laser.
You do have a laser, that's terrible.
Oh, it's the button on the back, I'll look at that. Okay. All right, let's restart this. So the Budget Preparation Process is a comprehensive effort that begins in October involving collaboration across all levels of the district. Staff members in each school share their budgetary needs with their school principals, who then submit these requests to the SAU office. The superintendent and business administrator meet with each school leader to carefully review and discuss these submissions. During these discussions, building administrators provide context for any significant increases, explaining special circumstances, or offering rationale where needed. As part of this process, superintendent and business administrator may ask building administrators to adjust their request, ensuring that increases are managed while maintaining the district's priorities. Personnel requests are also addressed during this time, with proposals for new positions evaluated based on the strength of the rationale provided. Depending on the justification, some requests may proceed to the Finance Committee for further consideration. This year's budget discussions included a mix of additions and reductions to positions reflecting the district's evolving needs. Public meetings to review the fiscal year 2027 budget were held on November 18th, 19th, and 20th, offering valuable opportunities for public for input and discussion. Following these sessions, additional reductions were made to further refine the budget. Looking ahead, there will be more chances for the community to engage with the budget process. School Board will be, will review and adopt at their meeting on January 5th at the KRHS Lecture Hall, followed by the deliberative session on January 31st at the Kingswood Arts Center. So you'll see on here, so, you know, we've gone through a whole bulk of the process that isn't always, you know, a lot of this is done internally, and then eventually, what our administrators, once they're ready and prepared, to bring us a budget that they're comfortable with presenting to the Finance Committee, they present to us. We do it each November, you know, I believe, second or third week in November, and now we're at this step in the process, which is, the Finance Committee is bringing something forward to the entire Board for consideration. Enrollment. Looking at our year-over-year enrollment, we see a relatively stable overall picture with some notable shifts at individual schools. Our total school, our total district enrollment last year was 2,076 students, and this year we're at 2,060, reflecting a net decrease of 16 students across the district. So that's across six towns, about eight schools. Several schools experience increases, though. Carpenter grew from 183 to 191 students. Effingham increased from 120 to 125. New Durham also saw an uptick moving from 144 to 150 students, and Osby rose from 275 to 295, continuing its upward trend. Tufton Borough had a similar pattern, increasing from 99 to 110 students. On the other hand, Crescent Lake experienced a significant decline, dropping from 181 to 145 students. In our secondary levels, KRMS decreased by 345 to 332, and KRHS LRTC shifted from 729 to 712. So you can kind of see, in our younger grades, we're seeing more young students moving into schools, especially surrounding communities outside of Wolfborough, and in our upper levels, we've kind of seen a small decline, but, again, these kids up here will eventually move their way into these columns down here. Yes, Dr. Beth?
Cody, I have to say, I'm quite surprised by the dip at Crescent Lake, and also no corresponding bump at the middle school, so this isn't an attrition move-up? What's going on?
I don't think we can really control the population, but if I were to guess, and, you know, maybe Dr. Eric Kellyan can expand upon it, less young people are moving into Wolfborough, it's a much more expensive community to move into versus some of our surrounding towns, there's a lot of younger families moving in.
So they're moving out? That's so...
Sorry, can you? He's grabbing my, Dr. Eric Kellyan. You can just take that with you.
So, it actually was that there was a large grade level at the middle, at Crescent Lake that moved on to the middle school. Even though the middle school looks like, because it dipped a little bit, it would have been even lower without this large class moving in. So there was a large class that moved from Crescent Lake into the middle school, and that's the cause of the dip.
I think suffice to say, we've had smaller enrollment numbers for our upper grade levels that are currently moving out of the district. Obviously, it's gonna take several years, but we're seeing an uptick in the number of new families moving in, especially to surrounding, you know, our, you know, municipalities like Effingham, Osby, New Durham. So those are things that we'll have to be cognizant of, and you'll see during the budget presentation, moves that we've made that reflect some of these ongoing demographic changes, and obviously, future budgets will have to, you know, they'll have to reflect as these kids get older and move into our upper grades. To the next slide, so general fund, this is small, but everyone should have a handout in that general fund, so those, you know, that should match your handout that you have. So that's the lines 320 through, you know, we'll go through a couple, so about 622, so not the top wages, below wages, your 300 series and beyond. Although professional services line shows an increase at first glance, it actually reflects a decrease once the change to Lakeside Academy is taken into account. Is taken into account. In previous years, the line included the ombudsman contract, which, a contract costing more than $300,000 to staff and operate Lakeside Academy, our alternative online program for students at risk of dropping out of high school. Beginning next year, we're moving this program in district and hiring our own staff, resulting in an estimated 50% reduction in overall program costs. The remaining amount in professional services is tied to mandated special education services, not Lakeside Academy. So as a place where we're able to find cost savings this year, and bring more services in-house that we can do on our own. You'll also notice that health services line is now zeroed out. This is because our nurses will no longer be employees of Huggins Hospital. Instead, they'll become district employees, which was the way it was years past. There was a cost savings when we shifted to do a contracted service. Their salaries are now going to appear in the employee salary section on the later slide. The increased costs associated with bringing nurses in district is also reflected in the teacher union warrant article. So, when we employ nurses in our school district, they fall under that collective bargaining agreement. So that, those costs will now be reflected in the teachers' union contract, because Huggins Hospital has ended their contract with us. Taken together, these changes reflect efforts to increase fiscal efficiency while strengthening district, direct district oversight of critical student services. General fund continued. On this slide, the land and building line represents the remaining local share of the Carpenter Building Project, which ended up having to be two phases, for those of you that aren't aware. Some of our classroom ceilings in Carpenter School had collapsed, so currently, students aren't utilizing significant force of that building, we had to rebuild it, especially the ceilings that address other issues with the building. The total cost of the project was supported through several funding sources. A portion was covered by the Buildings and Maintenance Trust, trust fund that we have where we've saved money aside for unexpected buildings and maintenance issues, and another portion was funded through Primex, our casualty liability risk reward member of, as part of the insurance claim. The balance that could not be covered by those two sources needs to be included in this year's operating budget. This line therefore reflects the, only the remainder of the Carpenter project cost that must be budgeted locally in the general fund, and this is a contractual cost.
Which line is that?
Uh, sorry, Buildings. Sorry, what was that, Kathy?
Seven twenty.
The seven twenty line, yeah, the land and building improvements. So you see, that's the line where it has a wicked high percentage next to it?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, it was previously, you can see our previous budget was 2,500, so that was the line that we're gonna be utilizing to fund the rest, the remainder of that project, so. Well, it would've been a lot more if it wasn't for our liability insurance, and if it wasn't for the $320,000 we're expending from our Buildings Maintenance Trust Fund to cover a portion of the project, so. Actually lucky we saved some money, and we have good Primex has treated us very well. Move on to the general fund employees. This slide reflects wages and benefits for all district employees, including administration, teachers, support staff, and importantly for this year, our school nurses will now be district employees rather than employees of Huggins Hospital. As noted earlier, the additional cost associated with bringing nurses in-house is not fully absorbed within this operating line. The overage compared to the previous budgets is included in the teacher contract warrant article, which we'll present about later, which you will see later in the presentation. Any proposed teacher salary adjustments or, you know, raises, quote raises, for next year are also contained within that warrant article, and we explain in further detail at that time. So we have a separate, as we negotiate a contract, we have a separate warrant article for those teacher salary increases. The slide also includes new proposed staff positions, which will be outlined and explained in the next slide. This is small, so I'll try to, I'm gonna go over each one, but if you want a copy of this, you can definitely email myself, or the superintendent would be more than happy to supply a copy of these proposed new staff requests. And additionally, reductions, we have multiple reductions enforced where necessary. So, this slide summarizes the staffing adjustments proposed for next year, both additions and reductions based on enrollment trends, program changes, and operational needs. We're requesting the addition of a maintenance technician, a position the Board approved last year but was unable to implement through the default budget. Our current maintenance team is stretched extremely thin, and this role is critical to ensuring timely repairs and preventative maintenance across all buildings. So we actually have, Kathy, what is it, how many staff members do we estimate that we're short about?
I think thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah, so, based on estimates for what we have for our physical plan, we should have thirteen, so we're hoping this year we can add an additional person to support our existing staff members. In the SAU office, we're proposing a finance manager to support growing financial and grant management responsibilities. To offset this cost, we're reducing an SAU administrative assistant position. So this restructure ensures we meet financial oversight needs while remaining fiscally responsible, so we're establishing a new position that's gonna have larger roles, more job requirements, and getting rid of another position that, you know, won't be able to meet the district's needs at this time. At the high school, we'll reduce one math teaching position. After a full review of our class sizes and course offerings, the math department is the only area where a reduction can occur without impacting programming for our students. To bring Lakeside Academy, now Kingswood Academy, into the district, we're adding one special education teacher and one paraprofessional. These positions allow us to operate the program in-house, reduce reliance on outside vendors, and strengthen services for our students. So rather than these students having to be bused off-site, or, you know, brought to a place where we're having to lease out space, they would be in the high school with the rest of their classmates, which is a huge benefit for them. At New Durham School, we're reducing one classroom teacher due to enrollment shifts, while maintaining two kindergarten teachers to support early learning needs. At Osby Central School, we're proposing to not budget for three vacant full-time paraprofessional positions. There's currently seven open. These roles have remained unfilled for a long period of time, even with new, even with the new union contract that was approved last year. So eliminating them is a reasonable adjustment, and this reduction helps us preserve existing teaching positions, which the enrollment data supports. So we're kind of on the cusp on whether or not we wanted to keep an additional teacher in one of the grades, and we decided we'll keep the teachers, because we can find teachers to work at that school, while offsetting paraprofessionals that are open, that are unfilled, and, you know, if we can fill all four paraprofessional positions, that would be great, but, you know, that might even be unlikely, too. Several positions included this year were approved by the Board previously, but we're not able to move forward. This includes a special education administrative assistant at KRMS, which ensures stability for the department with a large caseload, and the expansion of DPT roles in Tufton Borough and Effingham from 70% to 100% positions to meet special education case management needs. In addition, we're proposing to add a preschool DPT to support early intervention and ensure compliance with mandated services. Finally, although not displayed on this slide, we will be recommending, well, the Finance Committee has recommended a student wellness coordinator through a warrant article. As the district transitions away from Huggins Hospital nursing contract, this role will support mental health and wellness across all schools and aligns directly with our strategic plan. This new position will also help us with our nurses in any other caseload.
I'll bring you just one question before you move on. The hundred thousand, can you explain that a little bit? Because when I do my math, it seems like it's more than a hundred thousand.
That is just wages.
Yes.
That's three full-time, which is over 30 hours, I think they're 32 and a half hours. Three paraprofessional, that's wages. What you don't see is benefits, which I calculate on a separate spreadsheet. So down below, you have a total increase of wages for all of those listed there as a hundred thousand, and then, I'm sorry, wages are, sorry, are 48,000, and then with the benefits, it's a total of 100,972.
So doesn't it include like the finance manager at 8,000?
Yeah, it does, so we have a lot of pluses and minuses all.
Okay, so that's the net, that would be the increase net, okay.
Yeah, so, so you can see total wage increase, and then our total with the benefits cost, because this just reflects the wages, obviously.
So just the, yeah, because I just saw total, so that's what I got the clarification.
Yeah, and Dr. Beth, you have a question?
I do, so, so the, so just the staffing for the in-house version of Lakeside, that's gonna be almost 105,000, and you said that it was running us 300,000 previously for the ombudsman, and where was that reflected in the, in the general budget?
On the first line, that was the 320 line.
Yeah, I can go back to that, too.
Stated that.
How is that?
It's reflected in this line up here, Dr. Beth, if you can see.
It's still an increase because of...
Special services.
Got it, so we...
It would've been another... It'd be lovely to get a further breakdown of that.
Sorry, what was that, Beth, so we can all hear?
It would be lovely to get a further breakdown of that code, given that... Can you give me a list of contracts? That'd be great.
Yeah. So just so, Dr. Beth asked, you know, why is the professional services line still increasing despite us bringing, you know, Lakeside Academy, bringing Kingswood Academy, bringing in-house? It's because this line, professional services, is contractual services we need to provide for mandated special education costs, and those costs continue to increase. This is a pretty, not just in our district, it's a pretty standard statewide trend. We keep seeing special education costs continue to increase.
It just would be helpful to see like a further breakdown, I think, of that line, and then, is the 105 already in here, Kathy, or that would be...
What, 105, or you talked on...
The cost for the new wages for the new staff?
Yes, it is.
That's reflected in the 320 already?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, my last question was, why is the Carpenter, why is the Carpenter repair coded under improvements? Is that, was that a choice?
That's the object code, that's the object code that you're supposed to charge it to.
Okay. Just feels like...
For the account book.
I, and I asked about that specifically in regard to this, so the question was, why is Carpenter School considered under improvements? When it's like, it's a repair or rebuild. And Kathy, you correct me if I'm wrong, when we replace or improve something, we wanna make sure that's different than if it's a new purchase, so we're keeping track of new things that we're purchasing. So, in this case, we're not building a new building, we're making improvements or rebuilding. I guess either way, you know, improvements or rebuild, you know, we are, we're rebuilding sections of the school, so then students can utilize it safely, but we're not building a new school that would come under a new object code.
So we're repairing the ceilings, but we're also replacing the ceilings, replacing the lighting, so it's building improvements. It's to the whole, the whole, what is it, 1925 section of Carpenter School, which is two levels.
Yeah, I know that, I just, okay.
So proposed new staff, so, we'll move on to debt service and warrant articles. So over the past several years, we've retired bonds for Osby, Effingham, and New Durham, the elementary schools in those towns. Our principal for debt from the Kingswood Complex process, Kingswood Complex project continues to decrease. Each year, the interest increases as principal decreases, because we receive less state building aid with a reduction in the principal. This slide briefly summarizes all the proposed warrant articles for the upcoming budget cycle, and I'll walk through each one briefly, beginning with the items that require voter approval for funding, and then those funded through unreserved fund balance, which still requires voter approval, but we can only fund it if there's money left over, that was previously appropriated by the taxpayers. So first is the Governor Wentworth Education Association Teachers Contract, so this first warrant article is a newly negotiated teachers' contract, which both parties have ratified at this point, and so the next step to that process is the voters need to approve it. This agreement includes a 4% wage increase in each year for the first three years of the contract. The amount shown here reflects only the cost of year one, which is what the voters are asked to approve, and this increase also incorporates a shift of nursing staff into the district from the district budget, as discussed earlier in the presentation, so this cost of nurses that was previously residing in our budget needs to be shifted into their warrant article and approved by the voters. Second is the Building and Maintenance warrant article. This is $200,000. This article requests $200,000 for building and, for our Building and Maintenance Fund, which supports ongoing annual maintenance needs across all district facilities. We rely on the funding every year to ensure our buildings remain safe, operational, and Three, the trust funds supported by unreserved fund balance. So we have several trust funds that were depleted this year and need to be replenished, and these warrant articles do not raise new taxes, they simply allow us, with approval from the voters, to use unreserved fund balance to restore some of our, some funding in some of these trust funds, so unreserved fund balances, funds that we have at the end of the year that were unspent, maybe we came in under cost for something, we had open positions that we didn't fill. So these are, you know, of the trusts that were, would like to have approval for, we have money at the end of the budget to put money into, is the special education trust, which was fully depleted this year, the building maintenance capital reserve, used heavily for the Carpenter Project, and a health insurance trust, which our Finance Committee is presenting to the entire Board tonight as a, as a way of dealing with future insurance costs, because we got whacked with a pretty significant bill of 1.65 million from our insurance risk pool. That's where we get insurance coverage for our employees. So I'm gonna explain why we are proposing the creation of a health insurance premium holiday trust fund, and how it helps protect the district from unpredictable health insurance costs. So a trust fund works like a savings account. It allows the district to set aside extra money received in one year, so it can be used to offset costs in a future year, especially when expenses unexpectedly increase. And here's why this matters. So, our health insurance provider, which is School Care, governmental risk program, also called a risk pool, sometimes issues premium holidays, which means the district temporarily pays less in premiums. This creates an unexpected savings for that year, reflecting our budget with a lower premium amount. The amount that health insurance cost would've increased, increases less. So by law, pooled risk funds like School Care, they must return any reserves beyond their required minimum in the form of these premium holidays. They cannot keep extra money to prepare for future high-claim years, so our risk pool, they can't, they can't have too much in their reserves. At a certain point, they need to return it back in the form of premium holidays. At the same time, School Care has changed, has charged districts, including ours, a special assessment, when claims run high and reserves, their reserves drop. This year, that's exactly what happened. There was an assessment so School Care could rebuild their reserves and stay solvent. Our Board has shared at least two public statements on the matter, and is still exploring all options that, you know, with our legal counsel, but suffice to say, they've sent us an assessment, we have to pay the bills, and the people's claims, you know, our employees, their claims still are processed, and so they keep their health insurance, so we keep our contractual obligation to them, because that's what they negotiated as part of their collective bargaining agreement. Because these premium holidays are unpredictable, special assessments can be significant. Establishing a trust fund gives our district the ability to create its own financial cushion, should this become a more standard practice in the future with a, you know, with a very volatile health insurance market. Here's how it would work. So if we receive a premium holiday in the future, the district meeting, so the voters, can vote to place that unexpected revenue into the trust fund, instead of letting it automatically reduce the rates for one year. The money in the trust fund can then be used later to help pay for future special assessments, reducing large swings in the budget, or essentially making sure that we have money, so then if our risk pool comes along asking for, as what happened this fall, 1.65 million dollars, we have some level of the money to help pay for that assessment. In short, while School Care cannot maintain a cushion beyond its required reserves, we can establish this cushion on the local level, and this trust fund allows a district to better manage... And this trust fund allows a district to better manage unpredictable health insurance costs in a responsible way, in a long-term way. And again, these articles, all of them that I mentioned, including this one, are funded through existing year-end balances, not new additional appropriations. Also flagged to our board is going to be, as we've mentioned in previous statements, potentially exploring other insurance options. So this insurance trust fund could be important for, as we explore those other options, if we decide to leave, you know, risk pool and go another option, whether it's broker or self-insure, which is difficult, but something that we're kind of remaining all options on the table. And a trust fund like this is going to help us save money to deal, or to accommodate new potential options if we deem it necessary. It won't happen this budget cycle, but it's a long-term financial thing that we have to look at considering insurance costs. Warrant article for a student wellness coordinator. So this is a standalone warrant article requesting funding for a student wellness coordinator position. This role is a key component of the district's strategic plan and supports mental health and wellness across all schools, especially as we transition away from the Huggins nursing contract. So we believe, you know, there was a lot of discussion about this position in the previous budget. We felt it might have impacted, you know, some of the votes on the budget. We're hoping that we can give this warrant article its own standalone time for discussion and debate, and try to explain, you know, do a better job as board educating folks. At least, that's what the finance committee is presenting to the board, is having a standalone and allow a separate discussion on this item beyond the budget. We're also asking for a, another article that seeks to continue our free meals initiative that began this year. This is going to allow us to ensure all students have access to meals without cost barriers, supporting both equity and wellbeing for students. So last year, voters, our most supported warrant article, supported two hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation for all students up to three hundred percent of the federal poverty level to receive a free meal at school if they filled out a separate application above and beyond USDA application for free reduced price meals. So seeking an additional appropriation for this, going into, into this next, going into the 2027 fiscal year. Lastly, something you will see as a reflection of, there's no dollars in it, is our turf field capital reserve. So we're not requesting additional funds for the turf replacement capital reserve this year. The account currently has a balance of sixty thousand dollars, which we usually ask the taxpayers from, you know, unreserved funds to approve. So not additional, but those left over at the end of the financial year. Given the timing of more pressing priorities, we're going to pause a contribution for this budget cycle and hope to, you know, continue those contributions. We typically have saved about sixty thousand dollars a year into a trust fund for our turf field as a way to be able to save up money over, well over a decade, so then we can expend and have a new turf field without having to bond a project, which is, we actually recently just did that with our new turf field and were able to do it without a bond, which is important, because then that doesn't add to our debt principal or our overall debt burden in the district. So these warrant articles altogether balance contractual obligations, facility needs, student wellness, and financial responsibility while ensuring long-term sustainability for district operations. I'm going to break down our collective bargaining agreement that we negotiated this year. So this slide outlines the detailed cost components of the newly negotiated three-year teachers' union contract. The total costs you see for each year represent the additional amount that would be added to the district budget if the contract is approved by the voters. So again, collective bargaining agreements are multi-year agreements that we negotiate with, with our unions and the, our public sector unions in the school district, and they need to be approved by the voters. And they are on their own standalone warrant article. So here's the, what the figures represent. So year one, 2026 to 2027, is a one point six eight million dollar increase. So this first year reflects the largest increase, as it includes a one-time adjusted, one-time adjustments to updated stipends, and the shift of nurses into the teacher salary schedule. So again, we're shifting that about three hundred twenty thousand dollars in contracted nursing services into our, or an increase of that amount into this collective bargaining agreement. We're required by statute to do that. So key year one cost drivers include an increase to our professional development fund, a fifty thousand dollars, which is going to support instructional improvement for teachers that teach our students. They've really depleted that fund regularly. We're going to make sure they have enough to sustain them throughout the entire year. Additional compensation in summer pay, which costs about eighteen thousand nine hundred eight dollars total. So this is contractual adjustments that occur only in year one, incentivize more teachers to be a part of our summer programming in the district. Insurance buyback for life insur-, and life insurance costs, so an increase to the buyback if they don't take an insurance plan through the district, or life insurance, a term life insurance plan that we offer as a benefit. It'll cost about fifty seven thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Increase to sick, sick leave, so we have contractual sick leave reimbursement. So this figure is for all three years. We estimate will be about twenty-five thousand three hundred seventy-six. So teachers, they get their sick days, they don't utilize bought back because they've earned those days, and, you know, we appreciate them working, you know, and not using all those days. It helps us with staffing issues and keeps them in the classroom. Stipends, so there's going to be department heads, team leaders, CTE leaders, advisors, and coaching. So we've updated stipend structures to account for approximately thirty-three thousand three hundred dollars, most of which are only an impact in year one. So made a minor adjustment to some of these stipends and the compensation for people who do additional leadership work above and beyond their teaching, you know, what they do as a teacher. And then finally, our largest cost impact for the first year is the salary schedule, which is a four percent increase in each step for each year, beginning with year one. And these raises continue across all three years and account for the majority of cost. The significant reason why we reached that four percent number through negotiations is with the cost of premiums, the cost of deductibles for insurance, and coming out of COVID and employees working on a three percent increase each year, with inflation averaging well above three percent, actually well above six percent, we had to make some level of an adjustment to keep and retain teachers. And frankly, anything a little bit less than four percent, when adjusted for inflation, would have been, you know, with, they would have essentially been losing money when adjusted for inflation. So we negotiated, and we felt like we came to a number that was comfortable for the board and comfortable for the union, so the union could, you know, feel comfortable, could bring it to their membership, and that we can, you know, explain that rationale to the taxpayers over multiple year period, or as we go through the budget process. CTE nurse salary schedule. This is three hundred twenty thousand four hundred thirty dollars, and this is a major year one cost, reflecting the transition of nurses into district employment and placement on the salary schedule. And this cost does not repeat in years two and three. Once they're included, it, you know, will, they'll be included in future year adjustments. So year two is a one point three one million dollar increase. And so year two includes only the continuing contractual obligations, primarily that salary schedule increase, sick leave, and CTE advisor differential. No additional stipends or benefits adjustments occur in year two, and that's similar to year three. It's one point three six million dollars, which is again, that salary schedule increase, sick leave increase, and CTE advisor differential. And again, salary escalation reflects a negotiated four-four-four pattern across a three-year contract, and it's now become kind of standard in order to recruit, retain good quality teachers in our district. And we've seen that with our support staff contract, too. We had to make a similar adjustment. So in summary, year one is the most expensive due to one-time adjustments in the inclusion of nurses. Years two and three show steadier growth, driven almost entirely by the salary schedule increases. And these totals represent the marginal increase in the budget attributable to the contract each year and align with the negotiated four percent annual increases. And this breakdown supports transparency around what's included in the contract cost and helps the community understand exactly where these increases come from. We do get revenues. Not as much as, you know, from property taxpayers, but there are other revenues beyond local property tax revenue. So this slide provides an overview of the district's major revenue sources and how they support our operations. Understanding these revenues is essential, as they directly influence the amount needed to be raised through local taxation. Hampshire districts rely on a combination of state aid, federal funding, and local revenue, each contributing to the overall financial picture that you'll see on this slide. State aid remains our largest external funding source. Core components include adequacy aid, which establishes the baseline per people funding for essential education services, about a little over four thousand dollars per pupil the state provides. Building aid, aid which assists with school construction and renovation costs, and vocational aid, which supports programs at the Lakes Region Technology Center. We also receive special education aid to help offset the cost of high meat services, and child nutrition aid, which helps sustain our meals program. Federal revenue plays an important supplemental role. We get Medicaid reimbursement, which helps recover costs for health-related services required as part of special education plans, reducing the local burden of these mandated supports. Local revenue includes school lunch sales, so for folks who pay for school meals, we get a revenue from that, and tuition from out-of-district students. So towns like Middleton, Freedom, and Wakefield tuition students, or a portion of their students into our high school or middle school, depending on what our agreement is with them. In various, we also have various smaller sources that help support day-to-day operations. On this slide, you can also see the difference between budget 2025 and actual 2025. The difference represents the excess revenue collected over the budget amount. This excess revenue was applied directly to the school care health insurance assessment, which helped offset the substantial increase and reduce the impact on the local tax effort. So revenues that would historically have gone towards, you know, that, that we would have had as a cost savings and eventually passed on to the taxpayers. We sadly weren't afforded that option this year. Another reason why we want to have a health, why the finance committee presented having a health insurance trust, so then we can ensure these revenues that we get can be returned back to the taxpayers, because, you know, at least my personal opinion is we should be trying to give back as much as we reasonably can. Together, these revenue sources form the foundation of our financial planning and allow us to balance educational needs with responsible fiscal stewardship. So, important dates to remember. So Monday, January fifth is our next school board meeting. This will be our final budget hearing. It'll happen at Kingswood Regional High School. Are we, is it the?
Lecture hall.
We're meeting in the lecture hall. So we'll be in the lecture hall, so the main high school building.
What time is that?
Sorry, was it a question?
What time, sorry.
Public session will start at seven. Tuesday, January thirteenth is the last day for collective bargaining. We're done with that. We negotiated, we'll have a warrant article. It'll be yes in our vote in March. Tuesday, January thirteenth is the last date for petition warrant articles. Tuesday, January thirteenth is the last date to post notice of a bond hearing. We're not going to be presenting a bond this year. Monday, January twenty-sixth is the last date to post a warrant, budget, default budget. We'll probably have that done in advance until January twenty-sixth. We usually do, because we have all of our stuff approved at January fifth meeting. And then January twenty-first through the thirtieth is filing dates for school district officers per these statutes. So RSA six sixty-nine, colon nineteen, six fifty-two, colon twenty. I think that's it.
One more.
I think, I think everyone has listened more than enough to me.
Deliberate session.
What was that, Dr. Beth? I'm sorry.
You have a, a final date to announce.
Do I have a what?
You have a final date to announce for deliberative.
Oh, yeah, it's January thirty-first is deliberative. Sorry, yeah. Yeah, so our deliberative session is January thirty-first. It'll be at the Kingswood Arts Center, it is every year. And ten AM, correct? Ten AM. So ten AM, we'll, we'll have that meeting. And, and I think that's everything. So I'm going to go back into my chair, and we'll take any comments from the public, should you have any. So thank you for listening to our presentation, and, you know, we hope you stay engaged in the process.
This was great.
When you figured out. No, thanks, it's a hot on here. These old seats. Sir, I want to give everyone an opportu-, and there will be subsequent opportunities. You'll have, at the end of the meeting, there's public input. You can bring up the budget there, and we'll have our final budget hearing, January fifth, at the lecture hall at Kingswood Regional High School. So if you don't have anything now, but if you have, go right up to the mic.
Right up to you.
Right up to the, sorry, if I wasn't clear. Go right up to the mic and provide comments.
Carolyn D'Angelo from North Borough. This is just overwhelming for me. I'm just really, just starting to get involved somewhat, a little bit. And I, this doesn't help me much, but what you have in your hand, I would love a copy of.
We'll be posting on the website, we usually do.
Post it on the website.
We're very.
So I am to be technical about this whole thing. I'll do my best. Now, I really feel like such a beginner in all of this, I'm not even sure the right questions to ask, except that I'm, I'm interested, and this doesn't help me to understand, but what you were reading might help me if I just took it and really tried to absorb it and discuss it with other friends. So it's on the webpage, and what would, okay, so what's your webpage?
It is GWRS. Is it still GWRSD.org?
We still have that.
We still have that. I, I still, GWRSD.org.
Wait a minute?
It's probably on the agenda.
And it's on our agenda, too.
Oh, gosh, see? Oh, perfect, okay. Thank you.
You can also, if you have trouble finding it, you can email myself for the superintendent send, and we'll post it with my notes, too. So those are included. Okay.
Grace.
D'Angelo, DA, when you, from North Borough.
Go right ahead, Stephanie. Everyone's very eager.
Stephanie King, New Durham. First of all, thank you so much for coming to the school, and Kelly, I cried, I don't even have kids at the school anymore. I was wondering if you could, in addition to posting the handout with all the notes that you read, if you could post the proposed staffing handout as well on the website?
Yeah.
Because I couldn't, I can't read anything on the, it's so tiny, even on the slide, it's so tiny.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And I may have missed a handout, but when you were talking about the warrant articles, I don't see any of them on this blue sheet at all, so I don't know if this was an old copy.
The blue sheet's just our budget, just our operating budget.
Oh, you have other warrant articles on here?
We do, that's on.
From previous years.
Yeah, it's not part of the budget, but we thought for transparency's sake, we'd let people know what we're introducing as additional warrant articles.
Could you put those on this as well, please? So we could see how it, you know, because these are new ones that would add to it. Could you please, to be transparent? Because if it's separate, we can't see how it all adds up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, my only, so my personal opinion, I, I can't make that decision without the board's input. Maybe we'll have a further discussion about that, is that those items are supposed to stand alone from the operating budget. So I don't think it's, I think the best, my personal opinion, the best way to do it would be to show the cost of warrant articles that are from direct appropriations, what that additional cost is beyond the operating budget, just so it's more clear. Because I don't want people to think that those additional warrant articles we're requesting are part of the budget.
Correct. No, I understand that, but there's, there are already five, six of them on here. And so, just because you're, it's, it's in the same, it's still warrant articles, and you have some warrant articles, just to put them all together would be helpful for.
Oh, put all the, yeah, we can put, no, I think, I, I understand what you're saying, put all the warrant articles all together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but that would be helpful.
Is that okay with others?
Well, I, can I just clarify, just so, just so I understand, the ones that are on here already are previous years warrant articles that were approved and became part of our budget, yes?
Correct.
So adding them on as proposed warrant articles is a little different, but whatever people want to do. I just want everyone to be aware that what's here is what voters already said we could have as part of our budget. From previous years. Right, okay. Just so that everyone.
So some are going away, and some are being added, but just to get the full picture of how it all shakes out would be helpful. It's hard to compare what's on one slide to what's here. So thank you for that consideration. And then, question specifically about the nursing staffing levels? We'll, and I don't know if you can answer this, but with them being moved in-house, is it still the intention to have a nurse at every school, as it has been?
Yes, and that's required by state statute.
Okay, actually isn't. Well, full-time, full-time isn't, full-time.
Full-time isn't, but we will have a, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll have a full-time nurse at every school.
It's the current budget.
Yeah, that's how we've currently done it, and that's how we're budgeting for it.
Okay, awesome. And then, to follow up on Dr. Beth's question, that line three twenty, there's so much in there that went way up and way down, and I didn't know if, like, I know, it's hard to like request, could you specifically break down that, so maybe either reiterate? could you specifically break down that, so maybe either reiterate? Like, I don't know if it's in the notes as well, but there was just so much crammed into that, it was hard to follow in the notes, so if it can somehow be expounded upon in what you post, just because it, there was hundreds of thousands of dollars being added and taken away and I couldn't.
I think the.
Write fast enough to follow it.
Yeah, I think the key thing is, all the money that's remaining in that line is for contractual special education services, services we can't provide in our school district, we have to contract to that outside supplier.
And that accounts for most of the increase?
That is, that is all the increase.
That's all the increase.
And so there previously was, as part of that line, the total cost of our nursing contract.
No, that's a different one.
That was a different line?
Lakeside.
Oh, the abutment, that's right, sorry. The, the abutment.
So it's hard to follow.
I can understand, yeah. The abutment for Lakeside Academy, so who we contract, provide services for Lakeside Academy for, you know, that students who are at risk of dropping out, that was removed out and replaced into a different line. So about $320,000 that was in special education services has been moved into another line because there are now two employees that would be providing that service, so they're moved into wages, salaries, and things like that.
It was special education services that funded Lakeside previously?
It came from the same line.
Professional service, so.
It came from that same object line, so that's where the abutment contract was in last, current, our current year and the previous year, over $300,000. Now, going forward for next year, nothing is in that line for the abutment. It's salary for those two physicians that are on the PowerPoint slide deck, the teacher and the parent.
And that's a savings, or?
Yes, because the, the two staff members are less than $300,000.
They cost about 104, 105 in wages in the new, you'll see it in the new, the proposed positions, and the abutment was 300, 300K. So there is a slight savings, or 200K savings, not slight.
Yeah, so we say by.
I'm trying to make notes, but it's a lot, and so as long as it's clear in the notes and we can go back and, like, unpack it a little bit, but. Because I, I think I mixed up nurses, Lakeside, and special ed. And I don't know if that was just me, so thank you. One, I have a couple of unrelated to the budget questions, if I could ask, just throw them out there. Recently, with the, the outage in the cell phone, the, or the phone services, it was a little scary not being able to call the school, especially when there was a car accident out front and I couldn't get to my kid and.
I, I hear you, but this is the budget here.
I know, this is public input though, correct?
We'll have public input later and we had public input earlier.
Oh, I can't say unrelated comments, this is only comments, public input about the budget right now.
Yeah, that's why, I, I've scheduled this way so we can ensure we have discussion of the budget, but I'm more than, more than happy to accommodate.
Put a pin in it.
Later. Sir, any other input, comments on the budget, questions?
Do you want to see in the board or just the question?
Going to ask the public and then I'll close the public hearing and we can have a board discussion.
Thank you.
Do you have another comment or question? Go right ahead.
Carolyn D'Angelo again, I'm just wondering if it affects the budget. I don't even know if, as the kids fluctuating, some is, you know, less, some schools had less. Is it because they've been taken out to homes, be homeschooled, and does that affect the budget? I suppose if they're going out to do, to a private school or moving, it wouldn't matter one way or another, I guess, but I'm just wondering as far as homeschoolers, because do they get a portion of any of this budget? I, I, I just don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, so, so students who, so the district doesn't provide funds to students who homeschool or are, are in private school. Now, for every student that was enrolled in our school district when they leave, there is state aid that might have been, you know, I guess for lack of a better term, tied to that student, so base aid and any other additional aid, let's say they have, like, special education services that the school district provided, where we, you would see on the revenues, we would lose that. It's also economies of scale, if you have, like, one student in one school, you know, or two students even leave, you might lose, you know, eight to $10,000 depending on the state aid, but you can't fire a teacher. You still have, you know, your, your per pupil ratio hasn't significantly decreased. So there are times where if a student was previously enrolled in the public school and they have left, we see a revenue decrease, and when the revenue decreases, that does, you know, decrease in state aid does increase the amount we need to, for our total tax effort to the property taxpayers. So it's a little, I know that's a complicated answer, but it's kind of like, so students who were never enrolled in the school district, homeschooled in private school, that doesn't have a cost impact, we don't provide them money, the state provides them money, but that's separate from our budget. But if a student leaves our school district, you know, to, to, and they're still residents of the district, but they're utilizing non-public schools, private and, or homeschooling, we, we would lose revenue from that student unenrolling and instead using an alternative education option.
You just don't get the teachers. What is the teacher pupil, pupil ratio, on average?
It, it depends on the grade level.
Oh, okay.
So when they're younger, it's a much, you know, the, the ratio's a lot smaller, it's closer to, like, 1 to 12, 1 to 14. As they get older, though, to high school, it gets closer to about 1 to 20, even up to 22, and then it might depend on the school, too. There are some teachers who can feel more comfortable with the larger class side of upper elementary levels, closer to maybe 16, 17, 18, maybe up to 20 or 21.
That's good.
Yeah, so Dr. Betts just said her, her, her student at New Durham Schools, they have a 1 to 24 student ratio. So it does depend, it depends sometimes even on the students in the classroom. So some students are higher needs and you might, they might need more of an individualized education plan that teachers need to administer, and that can create an administrative burden where they can't teach as many students, it's just only so much time and resources to go around.
Thank you.
Any other budget questions, comments? Again, this is just a preliminary, so the board's going to have a discussion once I close the public hearing. All right, seeing that, I'll, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and I will open up the, I'll open it up to board members who, if anyone has any comments or any questions for administrators, at this time, I don't think, we typically don't make edits at this time, we wait until the next budget hearing to finalize the budget. So if anyone has any comments for us to consider, think about, and then move forward with before the next budget hearing. Yeah, Dr. Betts, here, I'll give you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say, I understand that this is the way your system pulls information, and I just want to echo what Ms. King said, I find that line in 320 with the major fluctuations in the expenses that we are facing this year dissatisfactory in the level of transparency that we are providing to the public. I think we have to at least provide an explainer for what's going on in line 320, somewhere in the materials that we're giving to the public this year. Especially since we're doing something very good related to bringing that Lakeside Academy in-house, and something we should celebrate, but I don't think, I think it's going to be lost in the launch if we don't do a better job of telling the story. And also, when we do the warrant articles, I know that we do the, we do the cost, do we do a percentage to the budget as well? What would it look like as a percentage increase?
No, because they're not part of the budget.
Do we do?
At least not far, I should say, part of the operating budget.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments?
No question? On the maintenance position.
Here's the mic, Tom.
Oh, thank you. On the maintenance, uh, position, do we have any backup information as far as what we have paid out to the prior maintenance staff in overtime on the last year? And does that add up to the wages benefit for a new person?
I'll let Kathy O answer that. I, I think Kathy, it's also important to explain that the number of maintenance that are, based on our fiscal plan, that we should have versus how many we do have.
Yeah, so we only have five. We have the director, which is a working director, and then four maintenance, full-time maintenance technicians to take care of over 650,000 square feet of buildings in the district. The standard is 500, uh, 50,000 square feet per maintenance technician, so that would mean we should have had 13 full-time maintenance technicians in the district. We do not. We did not pay anyone overtime because they are salaried, but I will tell you, none of them worked 40 hours a week. Our maintenance staff are overworked, we need to add another full-time maintenance position. I would advocate that until I'm blue in the face, because they do an exceptional job, they're loyal, they're dedicated, they will go above and beyond each and every time, and I don't want them drowning in work that they need to do. We, we don't outsource anything we don't have to. It's very expensive to outsource some of the repairs, the maintenance, you know, the work that's done in, in the district. And the buildings are not getting younger, they're getting older, I know that sounds like a, a broken record, but we do need that full-time maintenance position, please.
I didn't mean to attack anybody, I was simply asking for a different.
No, no, absolutely. You're welcome.
Thank you. I got a question. Go ahead. All right, cool. So I was looking at the revenue, and I saw that, like, for the miscellaneous, it was quite a drop from, like, 300,000 to 1 million dollars, so you got projected in '25, the budget was 300,000, the actual was 100 or a million dollars, is there, like, in the miscellaneous, is there, like, just, it seems like a big. Kathy, my memory says it was because we sold some vehicles.
Yeah, so we, we've got some revenue from vehicles, we've got revenues from rental. Let me go back to a detailed document that I have.
That's fine, I just, yeah, it seems like a lot.
It was unusual.
I asked that same question, there were thing, you know.
We had, we had some refunds from prior year invoicing that took place, which is, you know, good and bad, but, you know, we're, we're watching the money and we're questioning some of the vendors, but, um, let me.
That's, that's fine, I, I just, yeah, I feel, yeah. And the, just the other question was, so I get that we're, we're doing, the nurses will be, you know, we're going to save, it looks like we're going to save, like, $350,000 by bringing them in-house, does that mean? No, it's going to be a 350 increase. Oh, okay, that's, this is the 320s on top, okay, thanks. Yeah, I mean, that's part of the, Huggins was giving us an extremely good deal and they were like, we. Yeah, and, yeah, giving that up to my, so that's why.
Every year when we go to deliberative session, I always would do a spreadsheet, because inevitably you'd think that someone would question a Huggins contract for, you know, $900,000, but every year I would keep track of the nine, I believe it's the eight or the nine nurses that we would have to employ, and I would advance them along a salary schedule, even though we technically didn't have any, until now, possibly going forward, you know, with the ratification of the teacher's contract. But I would keep track of that, and every year it was absolutely, we are, the district was saving money by going through the contract with Huggins, but as, as we now know, Huggins cannot fulfill that anymore.
Thank you. Yeah, Tom?
Uh, follow up.
Could you grab the mic, please?
Yeah. Thank you.
There is one, so, yeah, use it sparingly.
On the nurse salary schedule, on page nine, it says, this is a major year-one cost reflecting the transition of nurses into district employment and placement on the salary schedule. All right, I'll just try to talk louder. So on page nine, we talk, what is a CTE nurse salary schedule, and it says, this is a major year-one cost reflecting the transition of nurses into district employment and placement on the salary schedule. This cost does not repeat in years two and three. Isn't that cost going to be folded into contract and salaries?
Correct, but it's not $320,000 more each year. It's the first year, taking $320,000 from our, our current contracted services in our operating budget, and it is part of, we're now hiring employees who are employed under the Governor Wenworth Educators Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, and so we need to increase the amount our first year beyond what we would have increased if we continued with the Huggins contract, because it's been terminated, the increase by $320,000 to reflect those new employees who are going to be in the bargaining unit, who weren't under the previous operating budget. And then, there won't be the future, it won't be like, you know, once we have that cooked in, there won't be like another $320,000 increase, our new nurse is added under the CBA.
Well, yeah, I understand that. That's why I was confused by this language, is we're still going to be paying for the nurses, and it's going to be part of the budget, so I, I think that can be clarified, that's all.
Okay.
This is the higher.
The other comments?
I just want to thank the Finance Committee, and I honestly, there was something super specific that I was going to thank you for that I don't remember, but I do know that a lot of work went into this and will go into deliberative, and it's appreciated.
Yeah, I did watch some of the meetings and I appreciate the negotiations from all the, like, elementary schools and stuff, doing a good job of trying to keep things down. I mean, you know, I know I think him came out, you know, lowest of all, I heard, so. With increasing, you know, I know, as well, so. Yeah, Mary?
So I'll piggyback on Nate's comment that he was able to watch the, the, the sessions for the public, those, the entire meetings of the deliberation, the three different meetings that are always open to the public, were recorded and available the same way.
Thank you very much for doing that, Mary.
I think.
It's a great opportunity and it's just something that was easy to do.
I think that's a, I should have brought that up during my presentation, we should include that in my next one, is that you can watch all three of our Finance Committee meetings on WCTV, and we took very, thank you Kathy Legassi for taking very extensive notes on the presentations provided by our building administrators during the budget process, so the meeting minutes that the Finance Committee approved tonight, we'll have also, you know, extensive explanations on each building administrator's presentation. So I'm really making, I would say, a maximum effort at transparency and access to information, because we felt as if last year there were some misunderstandings about what we presented, and it was higher than we usually did, and we felt if we did a better job of presenting this information, it would help justify the rationale better. Albeit, too, though, that the number is a lot better than last year, so that benefits us, too. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, there was one other piece, which is the special education costs increasing, which is true that that's the trend. So I'm wondering if, in, maybe at deliberative, and I'm open to, like, whatever labor I can help with, with this, that if we can address specifically, like, why that's the trend, why it's not specific to our district, why we can't, by law and ethically, why we can't deny learners who live here what they need to get an equitable, like, to get the same adequate education that they're entitled to, because it's not, I, I think there is some misinformation about, like, these are the same kids and things are just getting more expensive for no reason, where, like, I'm a licensed clinical mental health counselor, it's very apparent to me that things have changed that, like, probably the general public might not be super aware of.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is, we want a more robust slide potentially on the 320 line and some backup information on what those, what, why those financial trends are happening in the 320 line.
Yeah, and like, special, yeah, like, that special ed deserves that, like, what is special ed? Because it's coming up as a talking point, and I'm glad that we care about it, like, publicly, but I want those individuals to, like, be understood, and their needs to be taken seriously.
I think, I think we can, I'll, I'll work with our administrators for my presentation at the next meeting and for deliberative to include, you know, we'll have to include somewhere in the presentation a breakdown of the 320 line and demonstrating why that fiscal need is continuing to increase. Yeah, Dr. Gary, sorry.
Not for the, not for budget process, but I would love it if Dr. Mask would come and speak to that subject and address what she's seeing in the district and the state to the board at some point in the future. Is she planning to do that already?
She did at the Finance Committee, but.
I was not present for that.
We have her, we have her.
I can watch the recording and I'm.
I can watch the recording and I have...
Well, I wasn't gonna say the recording. We also have, based on the notes that were taken, like her kind of explaining some of that data, but we can also include some of that in our presentation, so we don't, great to have her too, but it's clear we need to have her information she shared with us out here.
She does, she will come.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's, so we'll make sure we take that, that information from, that's our, she's our Special Education Director?
She is.
Kelly Mask is our Special Education Director. So we'll make sure that some of that information that she used to justify the special education, you know, cost in three twenty line, that we break down what costs have been removed, maybe a little bit more illustrated easier and also kind of show despite those cost savings, what is our main drivers in that item.
I feel compelled to say one more thing.
Go, go ahead, Mary.
So the attention to and the interventions early on of students who demonstrate a need, when addressed early and developmentally over time, a great percentage of them absorb and empower themselves to move beyond that need. So it's not like, I would just encourage to add to that, that it's no different than addressing a need when it's the proper time with the skilled folks doing it, that these students, it's not like everybody's special ed for the rest of their lives. You know, I'm not saying it very well, Dr. Eric Kelly, you can help me, but there was a, it was a very great New Hampshire School Board Association video on special ed by any other name and percentages, and it's just early intervention. My brother couldn't say his essence, you know, it's simple, it's very, it's very nuanced and this district, as do others, address the needs developmentally and there's a great deal of growth and support to those students. Did I say okay? Did I address that?
I think, I, I went, when I was in elementary school, I was, had an IEP, a five oh four plan and had to go through pre-K program for early intervention and had an IEP until second grade and then didn't need an IEP for the rest of my life because I did early interventions. But there is a cost related to people who needed to diagnose the problems and then needed to work, you know, I had a speech therapist and there's, you know, other folks who were involved that helped me through that. So I think that's a prime, you know, there are people who we employ who receive benefits who do that as a full-time job that help young students, you know, work out of their IEP, for lack of a better term.
And I have four brothers, so the one that I just expressed is, you'll just have to guess who it is.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, then that concludes our preliminary budget review and hearing. We'll be back at it January 5th and we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. So I will hand the floor over to you, Dr. Eric Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, first I will highlight a couple of things in my report for the board, however, it's in the packet and this is a robust agenda tonight, so I won't go through the whole thing. However, I'd like to mention that all of our schools are applying for round four, the SAFE grant applications was, those were just released, the deadline was today. I'm happy to say that all the applications are in and there's a description of, under three categories, access control, surveillance, and emergency alerting. We should know either January, February, or March, when those are approved if we are recipients. Schools could apply for up to one hundred and fifty thousand per school. So I look forward to hopefully a really great announcement in the upcoming months. We're also holding reunification training meetings by region within the district this month facilitated by Homeland Security and attended by administration, safety teams, and first responders from all of our towns. We just held one for New Durham and Middleton at Middleton. We'll hold the Wolfborough Region, I believe that's this week, with our Wolfborough Schools as well as Brewster Academy because they are part of our reunification plan. And then we'll also hold one the following week with Tufton Borough, Effingham, and Austin. There's also a Carpenter School update, however, I'm not going to steal their thunder because the Building and Maintenance Committee will share that update. Suffice it to say, we're very pleased with the progress from Bowlin Corporation and we had a walk-through. So more information to come. Shall we keep going down the line of report?
Does anyone have any questions for the Superintendent on our district update? Seeing none, if you want to move on to your American Education Week appreciation?
Yes, thank you. So November seventeenth through twenty-first was American Education Week and we want to acknowledge that. We're very grateful for our teachers. Heartfelt thanks, always gratitude. We couldn't do what we do without our, without our teachers. We honor each of you and express our deepest gratitude for all that you do to brighten the lives of our students. So thank you to all of our staff, all of our teachers during American Education Week.
Next is the school calendar.
Thank you. So I bring to you a revised twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar. Thanks, I want to thank the board for approving a calendar last month. However, we were notified that towns need our buildings for an additional day for voting next year. So as a result, we looked at the calendar, pushed everything up a day, and it really went far into June. So this prompted us to look at a calendar to start before Labor Day. So, and we realized that this hasn't happened in this district for many years. It has happened, but not for many years. So what we did was we surveyed parents, guardians, and staff. And what we found was that there's a significant preference to start before Labor Day. So we have parents and guardians, three hundred and forty-five votes to start before Labor Day and sixty-four for after. Among all the staff, one hundred, that's as of the typing of this page, this memo, staff, one hundred and ninety votes before Labor Day and only twenty-seven for after. So given our two largest stakeholders were, showed a significant preference for before Labor Day, we put together a newly revised calendar for you. So adopting a pre-Labor Day start allows us to accommodate the required use of school, it's not required, but that's what we have offered for communities, including New Durham, accommodate the use of school buildings for three elections next year, maintain scheduled professional development days, end the school year on Thursday, June seventeenth with a half-day pending snow days, and still support community programming such as Camp Invention at the end of June. So the first day for students would be, it's still in September. So September first would be the first day for students, September first, second, and third. And then they would continue the Wednesday of the following week due to Labor Day and then a day for voting, which falls on September eighth. So I would be looking to the board for an action.
So moved. You want to do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
It seems like you're busy signing stuffs.
No, I mean, I don't make motions usually either.
Moved to approve the revised twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar as presented as established, a pre-Labor Day starting date.
I'll second.
Yeah, go ahead. I have some comments, but I'll hold them.
First of all, I'd like to say I'm very much one of the parents that voted for the before Labor Day start and was horrified by the prospect of being in-school regular days until like the twenty, whatever. Horrified, anyway. But I did see a lot of chat at the state level about the governor contemplating a mandate that all schools in New Hampshire would start school after Labor Day. Are we concerned? Have we considered, what would we do if that were to come down?
I have a comment on that, because that's what I was gonna bring up. So yes, there is state legislation, Senate Bill 403, that seeks to prohibit starting school before Labor Day, but if that bill were to become law, it wouldn't go into effect until, I think it was January first, twenty twenty-seven. Now, here's my honest opinion, is that obviously if it happens once, it can happen again. Separate to this vote, I'm wondering if that's something we want to consider, is reaching out to our state senator and our representatives and saying, "Look, here's our unique circumstance and we were accommodating for parents and for our town so they could host the state primary and so then we could have a school year that was more regular and met parents' needs." I mean, this is a prime example of why these decisions should be made locally. Look, we, we actually surveyed our families, surveyed our teachers, are going, gonna guess, listen to them and act accordingly, yet we have a state legislature that this whole process apparently was not good enough for them, that they on high know better for what our scheduling needs should be. I mean, that just always will rub me the wrong way, that this body that's closest to the people, you know, are, the decisions that we're making to carry out the will of our voters is just, can be nullified through the simple legislative process. Just, just my thoughts. I don't know if Dr. Eric Kelly has anything technical to add to that.
I share those thoughts. But that, that is what I found as well, as far as that legislation. It has, I did reach out to NHSBA and NHSAA and their response was, it has a long, it is in legislation, but it has a very long way to go and if it were to be approved, it wouldn't be in effect until the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight school year. So we would be safer this year.
Can I just ask a question? I don't know if we look so far ahead, but is there a chance next year that we could have similar circumstances where we might want to start sooner? Because I'm just, I'm wondering, I mean, you know, I ask because it just seems, it seems as if, I was surprised by the poll personally, because I actually told Dr. Eric Kelly, she's like, "Well, we're gonna conduct a poll." I'm like, "We're gonna find out no one wants to move to before Labor Day." And I was really wrong. And I think there might be some state legislators who had the same understanding as me and who are very mistaken at the moment. And I don't know who else is more primed to raise those concerns to the state legislature than someone who's just conducted, or a body that's just conducted a poll and has to actually make this decision. And I'm wondering if, you know, it's just, to me, it seems like this could be a decision we have to make in a future year, possibly next year. So I don't know. I just, I wonder if this is an opportunity for us to let our legislature know how we feel, if we do feel the way that I feel, we the collective, obviously we know how I feel about it.
I mean, I, I don't disagree. I think we can vote on this and we have some time to discuss.
I would put it on the next meeting agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it's nine o'clock and we still have a lot of things to do.
We do. All right. I think, I think Nate's calling the question.
I am.
All right. Is that fine? Are we good? All right, Kathy, if you're good, call the, the roll, please, once you're ready.
Tom?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yeah.
Nate?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. All right, we'll move on to the Kingswood Athletics fundraising.
Okay, thank you. So per policy, we need to bring to the board a request for crowdsourcing for fundraising. So you have a request in your packet from the, our wrestling program, from Coach Cowan to use SnapRace. And this is something that our business administrator has researched and endorses. So we are asking the board for an action.
I would, unless someone, unless the board disagrees, I'd ask for a motion to approve the, the fundraising proposal as presented.
Second. No, moved. Oh, sorry. A little second.
Kirsten moved and Danielle seconded, just in advance. She was so ready. Is there any, is there any further discussion on the proposal? I have no questions or comments, seems reasonable to me. All right, seeing none, Kathy, once you're ready, call the roll, please.
Tom?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Okay. Next, we'll move on to budget transfer requests.
Thank you. So you'll see in your packet two requests for, two transfer requests in special education. One is for a transfer of ten thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars from a tuition public elementary line to consult line for the payment of speech language services, assistant for elementary, and elementary school students provided by Boothby Therapy Services. That's one of those contracted services, professional services. And then the second is nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents from tuition public elementary to consult services elementary. This is for the payment of speech language services for elementary school students provided by Boothby Therapy Services. So often the professional service line is high because if we cannot employ these services in-house, we have to contract for them. So these are examples of why professional services is high.
Thank you, Dr. Eric Kelly. It's not standing upright. Is there, so we can do this, we can either approve each budget line item transfer individually or you can approve them as a bulk? I have no qualms with either one, but if folks want to do it as a separate vote, but I, I think it'd be more than reasonable, so we'll make a motion to approve both as presented.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Mary, seconded by, oh, you guys go, we'll go with Dr. Jim. We'll give you an opportunity, Dr. Jim. So moved by Mary, seconded by Dr. Jim. Is there any discussion on the line item transfers? Is there any question? Yeah?
I have a question. We had a similar transfer last month of about thirty thousand dollars. I think it paid the same Boothby therapy and now we're doing this next one for twenty thousand dollars. Did we lose a speech therapist? Is, I'm just curious, how's that?
We did not. We didn't.
Well, why are we, why are we moving around money?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So I'm trying to figure out how to share without sharing too much confidential information, but sometimes for students, so in this case, it's speech and language. And sometimes what happens in special education meetings is that the decision is that the student needs increased special, speech, speech services. And if that employee is not on staff, then we have to contract out for it. So it's not necessarily the case that we had a speech-language pathologist leave, but it's the case that we currently don't have someone with the space in their schedule to take on an additional student. So thereby we have to increase contracts. So Boothby Services, we already have a massive contract with them. And so if there's an additional decision at a meeting to increase those services and the line doesn't currently have that amount, then we are asking to transfer it.
Okay.
So it's a contract that already exists and we're trying to move money into it so we can increase for some students.
Okay.
Sure.
You have the question, Dr. Ben?
So if we have a very large contractual relationship for speech services with this company, are we contemplating increasing internal staff instead? I just, I get a little scared about fifty K in a couple of months, it's a lot.
I came up during the Finance Committee meetings.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to that.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I asked that during our Finance Committee meetings.
I couldn't go through.
No, I know, but Kelly Mask gave a very good explanation explaining like...
I really need to watch the video.
Sorry. I don't mean to mean it that way either, Akeem, but I'll let, I'll let Dr. Eric Kelly expound, but it was something, because with the Kingswood Academy, we're like, well, we brought those services in-house.
I have, I have serious fomo. Please let me...
Okay, sorry.
I'm not sure where I should dig in here. So with Boothby, it is a massive contract and whenever you, you bring on more hours or more services, fifty... services, 50,000 in the special education world is a small amount. So, yeah. And as far as hiring, we don't have an approved additional speech and language pathologist. So, that is not available at this time. We haven't gone to the board to request additional positions. But beyond that, SLPs are extremely difficult to find to work for the district. It's a whole big topic as far as how some services are not available in this region, or really statewide, and how Boothby has a, pretty much a monopoly on related services. We have, the contract with them does not allow us to hire anyone who works for them.
I suppose.
They, yeah.
They have a non-compete clause. So if we find someone, even if we're like, we could do, they could do what they're doing for our students with benefits and salary through our district, and maybe even better working hours. If we even were to offer that, they'd have to be like, I can't compete, go to a, you know, a competitor.
They pay more.
Yeah, for, what is it, 12 months or two years or something?
At least a year, maybe two years.
So that came up, because I was like, wow, so basically, yeah, they monopolize it.
Cool.
Yeah, isn't that disheartening?
This will be on our special education slide that we covered. It's a good point. We'll be talking about the related services. There's no governance over specialized transportation costs at $600 a day. So, the Lakes Region is actually, the Lakes Region Superintendents, we are working on starting a special education charter school in the Laconian area due to some of these issues. I don't think it will be too helpful for us on this side of the lake, but I'm happy to help them with that.
Any other questions or comments on the, yeah, go ahead, Nate?
I know last year, we had to appropriate from the trust and stuff, I mean, it's only November, are we gonna have to, like, you know, force, you know, I know we don't have to cross the ball, but like, you know, this is two trends, you know, two moves already in November, probably gonna have to, is that something?
I'm sorry, I was trying to open this thing, and now I'm just like.
Definitely some training for you for next year.
Yeah, no, we're, I've had problems with mics for four years now on this board, I don't know what it is, they either die on me, or I just can't deal with them, so I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm just saying, like, you know, are we gonna, you know, foresee more of this throughout the year, like, I know last year, it was like, you know, seven or eight hundred thousand dollars, like, that we had to, you know, find at the end of the year, right? You know, should we, you know, be trying to put some money away now, like, I mean?
Well, it's a couple of things. First, it is, you know, in the budget process, for all are different categories, we are trying to look ahead by two years. We're looking back a year, and we're in a year, and to project out a year. So it's always two years behind. So in special education, it is arguably the most difficult to predict. So, these transfer, it's, it's per policy that anything over 5,000 dollars, we have to come to you. But these are still two special education lines. So these are still within the special education whole big bucket. So, so that's not terrible news, it's that we're just shifting from one account to another. Now, it is still important for us to look at special education costs and expenses very carefully regardless, because this is an essential point, where we were last year, we had to use a special trust, those expenses have not gone anywhere, they're still here, those costs are still there, it's still as unpredictable. We could have, you know, someone who's in the district who their student attends an out-of-district placement that's 300,000 a year, that could happen tomorrow, and we have depleted a special trust. So yes, all of those things are very important for us to look at, and that's one of the reasons why we've taken some moves such as bringing Lakeside Academy back to us, so we can at least start to recoup some funds in that way.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We ready to move? Okay, Kathy, you can call the roll once you're ready, please.
Tom?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Next is chairperson's report, very brief. I have no correspondence that I've received. I guess I technically did get a letter from, who the heck was it? It's a certified letter, too. From Anthem, they were wondering if we wanted new health insurance.
Do you drive back names?
What? Yeah, they spent $924,000, I was flattered, I was like, wow, just to ask, just to send me a brochure. So, if anyone wants a brochure, I mean, we still, we have our separate meeting that we're gonna be exploring that. The other thing is, I got correspondence, it was today, right, Dr. Jim from the Brookfield Select Board.
Yeah.
Brookfield Select Board wants to invite myself and Dr. Jim to talk about how their tax rate is calculated, and past, last year's budget, next year's budget, which, just so you're all aware, Dr. Jim and I will likely be going to a Brookfield Select Board meeting to talk about tax rate, budget, et cetera, school funding. I want to flag also, though, that if any of you want to meet with your local select board to talk about the budget, I know I went last year with Dr. Beth to the New Durham Select Board, so let me know, maybe like a week or 10 days in advance, so I can schedule it, whatever evening, it's usually, I know their meeting, they're seven o'clock. Nate, I imagine you might take me up on that offer, I know you visit your select board.
We had a meeting already, I remember.
We did.
Oh, well, I mean, a separate one on budget, so, you know, as we get closer into January and move into March, feel free to reach out to your local select boards, and I will, the only one that's tough is Tupton Borough, because I don't know if they haven't changed their meeting time, Tupton Borough Select Board, like, to meet at like, nine in the morning, on like, a weekday.
Cool, sounds all right.
That's at least how, I don't know if they've changed that, but I remember a couple years ago, when I was a legislator, I was like, really, 9:00 AM on a workday? Who's gonna attend that? Who's not a selectman, who's retired? And anyway, I liked the Tupton Borough Select Board, but I found, I found those to be difficult for working with people's schedules like myself, so let me know, if I have to take a day off, I will, within reason, or take a morning off, but just, you know, I'm more than happy to sit down with any board member and talk about the budget. I know we're gonna be doing that again, I can see some eyes already. Are you gonna invite me to the at-large budget?
I thought you might want to invite WCTV to come.
To some of them? If you, if we go in front of, who's the Wolfborough Board Member? Oh, Kayla? Kayla, if you wanna drag me in front of the Wolfborough Board of Selectmen? Your choice, you're the Wolfborough Member. Yes, Tom?
Whenever you go, I'd like to go with you, just to listen.
More than?
Can I face out there, because I'm up for a mic?
More than, I'll let you know when, when we're invited places, so. Go to Ospey, Danielle, I don't know, I haven't seen them in a while, so, anyways, we gotta make our rounds, so that's something that we have a goal, so let's, everyone who represents one of the towns.
I reached out to Ospey as well.
You do, too?
I did, and they didn't really want to entertain that, so.
Oh, come on. All right. Anyway, try to give me some good advance, and good time in advance, and we'll, we'll figure that out, because it takes a team, so. All right, we'll move, unless, any other comments or questions? Nope. Okay, so we will move on to the, yeah, committee reports. Oh, academic affairs, Dr. Beth, here you go.
Thank you, okay. So tonight, we have policies that are for you at first read, so as a reminder, these are not being adopted tonight, so I'll just go through each section, and there'll be opportunity for discussion, and then they will go back to committee for second read, and revision if necessary. So, very exciting, in our recommended for adoption section tonight, we have new policy, EHAG, which is about AI, and then also, new policy IKFG for career exploration readiness, pathways and credentials related to alternative options for seeking degrees. Is there any discussion related to either of these two new policies, ready for, moving forward for adoption? You must have something to say about AI. AI has a lot to say about it.
Well, I'll just say that I appreciate there was a lot of work before it came to committee that went into writing that policy, it was a committee within schools, right? So, that was good, it's good that we have something, I have lots of thoughts on AI that I won't share here, but it's good that we have at least guideposts, because it's not something that we can not have in this present world and time.
Any other discussion? It is important that we deal with these tools that are now present in our classrooms and in the lives of our students, and we need to be proactive about it. So real things we have to do. And then any comments about IKFG? Please feel welcome to write to me or anyone else on the committee affairs, if something occurs to you in the interim. Moving on, we have several policies for reaffirmation. We did table two policies, BA and EID, as a result of our discussion in committee, so they may come back around, but they're not part of the pack yet tonight. So for reaffirmation, we have policy BEA, which is school board powers and duties, they're going, one sentence. We have policy BBD, school board elections. We have policy EEDH, public participation at board meetings, which has been a hot topic lately. We would like, as a committee, to draw the board chair's attention to Section 11 of policy EEDH for your pleasant reading this evening.
What, what, what section?
We just want you to read Section 11, which is related to feedback related to public comments.
People appearing before the board are reminded that public time is an opportunity for research, but if it's important.
Just based on, on some of the sessions you have. We also have policy BE, BHE, school board use of email, CA, administration goals, which, to which we have made a clerical addition of budgets in number one. Policy CB, school superintendent, CBI, superintendent evaluation of school setting, and policy CHD, administration in policy absence. Any comments or questions about the reaffirmations in this?
Well, were the two that were tabled, and why were they tabled?
We tabled policy BA, I can tell you why. We are considering recoding it, and looking at the BA sample from NHSBA. Our local policy is quite different to the policy that the School Board Association suggests. Tom, you had specific thoughts on this one during the committee meeting, right?
Well, the big thing is, they're very, very different.
Yeah. We were considering recoding this as a local policy, because it covers different content than what's in the sample from SBA.
What was the other one?
Uh, EID, which, hmm, we, we tabled that before you, Dr. Karen. Insurance? We thought that was a legal question for our, or we continue.
I've.
We didn't want to advance it to the full board about.
Got it, okay. So you guys are gonna explore the, what is it, school board operation, or what is it called? The BA?
Yeah. For the, our meeting. Any other comments on reaffirmation? Okay, moving on, we have several policies that are being recommended for revision, including policy BCB, board member conflict of interest, support, involves netism. Policy BEA, which is board meetings, there is a number of suggested revisions to this one, it's really quite relative to the work that you do, so make sure you're comfortable, if you have questions, let us know. Kirsten, do you have something?
Hi, what was the letter you said?
BEA.
Oh.
Board meetings.
Can I speak? I'd just like to earmark, I'd like to amend BEA, I believe. In it, it says, it's about publication of draft minutes, and it says that draft minutes, when they're done, after, can be displayed at the SAU. I would like to change it to say, not only displayed as a hard copy at the SAU, but to be placed on the website.
We do that in practice, right?
Draft minutes are required to be, they have to be available within 72 hours, and then we post them as well.
Are you looking for a language change in here, Tom, and where?
Just to add that language, it's missing, I mean, it's like a second mention of it. I'm sorry, I don't have it, pardon me.
Okay. And, I'm not sure where you, that's why I asked about language. I don't know if this is the one that you need, Tom. This one is about board meetings themselves, about, about them being posted for the times, and then they'll leak it to the public. We are warned, written notices at each meeting are expected from the office in advance of the appointed time, but this isn't about minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just want to throw that up there, that, when I find out which one it is.
Yeah. Different policy, I think. It might, okay. So you're good? BEA, which was an interesting discussion related to the board organizational meeting, we made some specific changes in light of the come board vote last year, and so if we have to meet a number of votes, then we can table that decision.
How would that work operational?
Then Carolyn would be interim chair during that time.
That definitely violates Education Department rules, someone can't be the superintendent and act as chair of the board.
For that organizational meeting, I think that she's allowed, you can have.
She's conducting a meeting, but she's not acting as.
No, she has no authority.
Which is what happened at the last.
I understand that, but it says, in the event that not all board members are present for voting, resulting in a tie, which technically all board members were present, because Guy resigned effective immediately, the election of the chairperson and vice chair may be postponed until the next meeting when all board members are present. I don't know how, so we're just not gonna have a chair, or a vice chair? Is that allowed? Who calls the next meeting? Isn't the duty of the board to appoint a chair, so then we can continue conducting our business on behalf of the public? You can't just leave a superintendent who's an unelected official, our employee, as an interim chair for a month. I find that grossly irresponsible.
Okay, first, I can guarantee you, almost all of these are samples we get from the New Hampshire School Board, so if there's something wrong, then we'll go back.
I would guarantee you, and I would bet my life on it, Vera Christina or Will Phillips did not draft this language and recommend it, at least in the second paragraph, to any board.
That's weird, don't we? Did we draft that new language, right?
I don't, did we draft that to the meeting?
I think that's something we should have gotten on a bare minimum legal review about, I mean, that's a, that's a huge, that's a, that's a significant thing.
I think that the goal of the revision in this case was to ameliorate the issue that we had this time, where a board member resigned immediately to a reorganization, which is highly, well, well, we will never have it again.
To me, it's such an unusual thing that will probably never happen again, why would we make policy for such a, I mean, a circumstance that will never happen again? It seems. It seems like our process set has worked for, since 1963, worked extremely well. And there are times where boards get hung, and it takes time to choose a chair, and eventually you choose one, then we all move forward. This, to me, seems like a very, I mean, we would have to end the meeting, there could be business that's necessary for that day that wouldn't continue. I mean, I just, I feel as if we have an obligation, even when we can't fully get behind a chair, that it takes time, that we work it out. We gotta, we gotta do it at an organizational meeting, that's my, that's my opinion.
Katie has the sample language, if you'd like her to read it.
Sure.
So it doesn't exactly say that, but it does say, "This meeting shall be called to order by the superintendent who shall preside during and until the election of a chairperson."
That, that, to me, seems good. I like the superintendent overseeing it, so that it's not like the chair overseeing their own election, or, you know, et cetera. It seems like a more objective way to do it, but my thing is, is that we have this random, we'll have this random additional policy that seems to be drafted for a very specific circumstance that is highly unlikely to happen again, that is legally, bare minimum, ambiguous, to my question. I mean, it would seem as if we're advocating our duty to elect a chairperson at the organizational meeting.
Does cover it in this top.
I think the top's a great edit. I think the bottom edit is deeply concerned.
Okay, thank you for your given. We will return to the meeting for second reading. Other comments for this policy? Any? Policy BCB, Pointed Core Officials. We have added the treasurer to this section because we have one. And that was part of the sample policy, and it should be reflected here.
Look at this, I've had this for three years now. I've wanted to update that. No, but I'm just, it's done now. Yeah, policy for the Could we go back to the nepotism one? What was, was the edit just the strikeout? I just wanna be sure.
And
That's BCB, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Because I couldn't find the blue, and now I'm realizing I should ask before I move forward.
It's revision, but it was mine. We, yes, we remove, okay. So the reason why we made the edit in the final paragraph is because it says, "The adoption of this policy," which is a reference to 1989, when the policy was adopted. It didn't feel like that was necessary anymore.
Is that in case with the two case law cited in the policy? Is that in line?
Is that in line with the case law cited in Marsh and over in Appleton versus Conver?
I don't know, I'm just wondering.
... prior to the inception of the relationship, the adoption. This shall not apply to any, we felt that it was within the spirit of new hires at this point, because no one could possibly, we have felt it highly unlikely that someone would have been hired prior to 1989 and not address by this policy at this point.
Does adoption mean when we reaffirm or revise?
No, it means the adoption of this policy.
I would view it as when we're adopting it.
Well, in that case, then there is, then there is ambiguity and the difference between the two.
Yeah. Okay, those are my comments.
Do you oppose this draft?
I'm always one who leans towards what NHSBA has drafted has usually been vetted by their legal counsel and seems like the safest bet.
I'm happy to write it down.
That would be great. I would appreciate that.
ECE. Yeah, ECE, which is local policy, parking lot procedures, Kingswood Bronx. So that has been updated into alignment with local practice at other board members' request.
Thank you.
The next is EI, Risk Management. So, and EIB, Liability Insurance and Cold Risk Management. We asked for these two to be looked at, related to adding Oh, I forgot. Okay, wow.
You just have GBDs.
Yeah, no, I just, okay. GBDs, Board Employee Communications. GPK, Employee Complaints and Grievances. Am I wrong?
Did you still look at this?
No, she's, she was, yeah, she's on the right agenda. Don't worry.
I had two in here that I shouldn't have, I should pull. I apologize for the prior IHBH, Extended Learning Opportunities, and IHBI, Alternatives Learning Plans.
Any discussion?
Seeing none. The final section is Recommended Withdrawal, which is only BCAA, School Board Attendants, which is a local policy. We felt the administration thought was redundant or necessary.
Clarification on what we're tabling, is it BDA? And
So anything not in the list that I mentioned just now?
But the things that, that were the
Though we, we as the committee table BA and EIB, and we took no action on Policy EI.
I mean, they're just, sorry, I'm tired.
I think Mary's
Yeah, the board organizational meeting was the one that we're going back to.
Yes.
Do you want a motion for the board to?
It's first reading, so I think that we can handle it in the second reading.
Okay.
That is the whole point of bringing it to you now, so you can tell us what you want. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Do we need to move on with this?
I think we can, do we need a motion to move to the second reading?
Just first.
Okay, thank you.
You're all.
All right, thank you, Dr. Beth.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to our Buildings and Maintenance Report. Dr. Manning, here, I'll pass the mic to you.
Well, I wanna pass the mic to Kayla anyway.
I can just yell. Our mic's broken.
Okay, go for it.
We had a great walkthrough with the town corporation and our maintenance staff. They're doing a fantastic work. It was really cool to see the progress as being made, the coordination that they have between them, working as team. I don't know all the technical terms myself, but we learned a lot, and there are, they did uncover some additional work to be done, but that's, I think it was minor repairs as they go, which is, of course, what happens when you start digging into a project. We, we did see an example of a new room that was finished and totally done, one classroom that was freshly painted, and the light was shining in the windows, and it was beautiful, so it gives us a lot of hope. And they're making a lot of nice changes, thank you. And they're also working on things that will also update what we currently have in the building, so more efficient LED lighting and things like that, that are just gonna help us down the road. Also learned a lot about how things used to be done, and how codes have changed over time, and so they're making a lot of updates, which we probably can't recognize when things are done, but to know that all of that up there in the ceiling and in the walls is, is updated currently is, is good, so. There's pictures in the packets from Caroline, and if anybody has any questions, maybe we can try to answer those.
Anyone have questions for Kayla, Dr. Jim, about the Carpenter School project? You guys have anything to add?
No, they're on track.
They're on track.
Oh, yes, and they're on, that's
They're on schedule.
I appreciate the opportunity for the board to walk, do a walkthrough. Happy to offer that again.
And we're gonna do that again.
Yeah, happy to.
Maybe not a one look. Yeah.
Sure. Are there any requests?
I can't make a one look. I can make like a four, five.
Just a matter of when the contractors are there. But we can, we can schedule them.
We can move on to the Community Relations Report. Nate, you guys had a meeting tonight, you have an update, or?
Yeah, we had a great meeting today, very effective and efficient meeting tonight. We talked about a lot of things. Specifically, one thing that we'd like some guidance from the board, as it was tasked with the community relations about legislative updates in Oneville, so we would like to see, like, what are you looking for from the Community Relations Committee for that?
I'll speak for me personally.
Yeah, I think maybe with all that I love, so
Key issues that NHSBA is contacting us about, that they want us to reach out to our legislators about, or that the committee might identify as something that we may uniquely care about, even if it's a more niche issue. I think a way to just, their legislative bulletins that they send out every Friday are a lot, and I do try to read through all of them, but it would be good if, if the Community Relations Committee was like, hey, distilled some key things, and then said to the board, are there things that we want to raise concerns about or support for? That's my personal, because I think I've heard from board members, before I was chair and now having been chair, that people wanna raise some more, want to get, not involve in the legislative process, but advocate more as part of the process. But I feel as if a committee needs to distill priorities and things for the board to consider, and go through those things and talk with administrators about real-world impacts, and impacts on the district, rather than just put a bunch of random bills on our agenda and start, all nine of us, you know, sharing all of our opinions all over the place, that could get messy. That's my personal thought.
Okay, great. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay. Also, we talked about the social media position that we're working on, working through to get that filled. And we talked about, you know, obviously the upcoming, you know, the messaging coming out with the, you know, the new contract, the budget, and how we can get that message out, you know, different ways we can do that. We have our next meeting, January 5th, before the next school meeting, we're gonna talk about our communication plan and try, try to work through that. We talked about some, doing a quarterly, you know, like a, you know, newspaper, you know, trying to get messages out, you know, important stuff in this board, quarterly in, in other newspapers, so, wanna talk about that too. But obviously, we didn't get that all done, but we're discussing it and moving on, so we'll talk more about that in a minute. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Nate. Next is Finance Committee Chair, Dr. Manning. Do you have an update?
Update on what? We've already, well, I would update, you've already delivered a very long and complicated speech. It was well done.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Jim. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, wonderful. Human Resources, my only announcement is, not only are we done negotiating a contract with the board, ratified what it's gonna present to the voters, as has the Governor Wentworth Educators Association, so the contract we presented on tonight will be placed on the ballot for the voters to approve or not approve. So we are hoping the voters approve it and make an investment in our teachers and community, and we'll be working extensively with weas leadership and membership to justify the, the cost and the investment that, that we'd like the taxpayers to approve. Noncommittee reports, Wolfboro Capital Improvement Plan. Kirsten, I think you guys are all done, right?
We've been done, yeah.
You've been done. So we can remove that from the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any insights you wanna provide on the end of that process, or?
No, I was not able to make the meetings to present because I have little children at home, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. But everything is available online for anybody that wants to go and check it out. There's a nice presentation up there.
Excellent. WCTV, Mary.
Thank you. There's two things I'd like to mention. One of them is the Festival of Trees, and Kayla, if you'll help me out a little bit on the opportunities for families in the community, with Wolfboro Community Television, it's the same as why we're here today, the value of communication and, and the organization of just regular old folks to get together and make things happen. WCTV does have a tree there, as are many, many wonderful nonprofits, commercial entities leaving stuff out, and schools from the district. But if, would you mind sharing what you know about the activities that are new and approved over time, that parents and families could go to?
Oh, absolutely. So tomorrow, Wednesday night, there is a pizza night, so it's $20, entrance at the door. That's like, I would say, a parent and caregiver event, 21-plus, pizza and beverages available. Carol Ramsey plays Saturday on the 14th, 13th, and Sunday on the 13th, regular festival hours, but Saturday is Kids Fest and Santa's Saturday, so if anybody wants to bring kids, it's $10 at the door, and then children, there's a certain age range, I'm gonna forget, I think it might be four to 10 is $5, under three is free. Cal Ripken, Kingswood, Kingswood Cal Ripken Baseball and Softball League is sponsoring the refreshments that morning, as well as a lot of other sponsors too, from the community, so it's, it's gonna be a fun day on Saturday. And then Sunday is our closing day with carols and singing, and I think those hours are 12 to 3.
So it's available on social media and all over the place, and help me if I mess this up, all of the monies generated, our, the food is all donated from respective entities in and around the region, and it's one of its annual events since 1999, I understand, and the recipients of these general generous contributions go out to beneficiaries over time, and it's always about kids. And fun, okay. Then I'd like to talk about the fact that WCTV is closing out 2025, we're very successful because of the same old community that I've been talking about, generous contributions to get us to stay alive. And I'm just gonna read this so I don't do what I'm doing now, which is rambling. WCTV's 2026 goal is to directly support the Governor Wentworth Regional School District's strategic plan by strengthening transparency, enhancing communication, and amplifying student learning across all district towns. It is the community, with the community media partner, WCTV helps ensure families and residents have consistent equitable access to district information and student-centered stories, to which I would like to mention Camp Invention, which has already come up tonight, and Principal Colby Seavey brought up last board meeting, I believe it was. WCTV is partnering with Kelly Colby Seavey and the National Inventors Hall of Fame. We will be promoting a goal of hosting Camp Invention at every Governor Wentworth Regional School District elementary school this summer. What we will be doing, the WCTV coverage will include short promotional videos demonstrating the design and thinking and hands-on problem solving, and we will be also interviewing past participants in students, adults, and families, and the benefit of these experiences in just a week's time that scaffold for all of the STEM learning that happens later on. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions or comments for Mary? Seeing none. We wanted closing activities, so advanced planning, some future meeting dates and events on the 18th of December, we have a Human Resources Committee Meeting at OCS, Ospey Central School at 6 o'clock. December recess is the 24th of December through the 2nd of January. Our final budget hearing and school board meeting is at Kingswood Regional High School in the Lecture Hall at 7 o'clock PM is when the public session starts. The 19th of January, no school for MLK Junior Civil Rights Day, and the 31st of January is our deliberative session at Kingswood Arts Center, 10 AM. With that, we'll move into public input. Is there any public input?
I'm gonna make it. I just have a couple of quick, a quick things. I know we're all wanting to go home, and I feel terrible now. I, I wanted to say thank you so much for all the work that you did to clamp down on the, the phone crisis and the hack that our district had. It was amazing. And Kelly, I know you gave out your personal phone number during that whole stint, so that, you know, families could get in touch with the schools, and I just, my only comment was, it would be so awesome if administrators didn't have to do that, if we could just get them like a quick burner phone or something like that, so there could be some sort of emergency contact point in the future, just in case there's a massive hack on the school phones and an accident in front of the high school. It could happen. My, I had one question about the Algebra and World Language credits for middle school, and whether or not and whether or not the current class of eighth graders would be eligible to receive those credits. I don't know in terms of implementation, but nobody at the middle school seems to know, so I thought I'd ask the board.
You can always email us, Katie.
If you have information, you know, I know you don't and can't answer on the spot necessarily, but if...
Yeah, I think Dr. Beth pointed out in one of our policies that we don't respond to, to public input.
I'm not expecting one, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering how parents might be informed.
I think if, um, if folks wanna reach out to Daniel Harvey, our new curriculum, our new director of curriculum, that would be a great place to start for them to ask curriculum questions.
Okay, great, wonderful, thank you very much. And then the last comment is just, um, thank you for publishing the neighborhood news that goes out in Parent Square now. And it's, Katie, I think you're doing that and you're aggregating all this cool, these cool events happening around the district. And it's so interesting to see it all in one place for the very first time. And I just think it's fabulous as a parent. I just love seeing all the different things going on so that we can kinda celebrate each other across this really wide district. And just a thank you to all of you every day for what you do, day in and day out. Thank you for staying late and not being paid for it. And just get a lot of criticism and not a lot of love, so just sharing a little love.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? No, all right, I'll close the public input. Uh, request a motion to adjourn.
So.
Moved by Nate.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Kathy, we can call the roll once you're ready.
Tom?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Kayla?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Oh, come on.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Brody?
Pathetic eye.